Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichler?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Murrattan?
Here.
Mr. Soms?
Here.
Mr. Wodecki?
Here.
Eight here.
Paul Thompson?
At this time, are there any residents or property owners who would like to address the council? Mr. Treister.
Good day. Eric Treister, Ten Hinton Way. After the Monday evening's meeting on the proposed budget, I did some thinking about the police station. And it's a really complicated decision. I support the location because I believe a police station should be highly visible. And so the proposed location, I'm in favor of. I think a modern building is conformant with the design guidelines for the Ledyard Center will complement the town. It'll complement Village Market, the dime bank, the new landscaping and fencing and trees and sidewalk we put in across the street. I think it's a good thing. On the other side of the coin, a new police station is a discretionary expense. There's no, nobody has claimed that it will improve the public safety, even though it probably will in many ways, but it's not, it's not clear as to how much the town is getting as far as safety is concerned. So it is a discretionary expense. And one of, one of the things that concerns me is that constructing a new conforming building, consistent with our design guidelines, next door to the, to the town hall, it will eliminate the old, the old fire station, which is good. But it conflicts, it, it's, it's not consistent. Where I'm going with this is that Ledger Center is becoming a little bit seedy. We have too many signs, we have too many signs that do not conform with zoning regulations. We have too many buildings that need paint. The fence across the street in front of the, the elementary school is a chain link fence. We don't permit chain link fences in designing districts, in village districts. We have, we have a gas station with abandoned gas pumps that should have been removed years ago. That, that, that abandoned, that, that particular business is, is, if I was a zoning officer, I'd be thinking, right, 25 zoning violation time. But the, but the concept of dropping a nice new shiny building into this part of current Ledyard Highway is a conflict. So what I suggest, what I'm going to suggest tonight, and this may not be the right place, I probably should have gone to, to the Ledger Center Committee first, but I'm here. Most of those properties that need attention are owned by long-term residents of the town who I believe care about the town. And I suspect, although I do not know for sure, that each one of those people is reluctant to spend the money to improve their properties because they're afraid that their neighbor will not, or they're afraid that the taxes will go up. If the police, if the town markets the new police station as an integral component of a Ledger Center improvement project, part of it, I mean, not, not as a standalone police station, but as a key part of an improvement project. The improvement project would be an effort by all of the businesses to bring the signs into conformance, reduce the number of signs, either remove or, either remove or replace the chain link things across the street. Get those gas pumps removed. It could probably, it would, it would be a much more marketable project to the citizens because right now, any tax increase, even, even, even $10, in, in this economy is, is a pain, is, is, is difficult for a truly discretionary expense. There are three ways to make this happen, in my opinion. One is to do it voluntarily. I believe all of the owners of these properties are reasonable, and I think if someone grabbed the ball and ran with it, it could all be done on a voluntary basis. Formal, but enough, enough formality so that it could be integrated with the proposed police station, at least from a marketing perspective. If that was not possible, an aggressive enforcement act, aggressive enforcement could do the job. We certainly have the ordinances and zoning regulations to make it happen. And the third one is a change in the tax structure for Ledyard Center, to change it to a land value tax. There would be no tax whatsoever on permanent improvements, but the tax on the, the tax rate on the land underneath those improvements or on the acre lot would go up, the mill rate would go up on that land, to a degree where the total package, total revenues would be revenue neutral. What this would do is it would encourage people to maintain their property. They could improve their property without the taxes, without the taxes going up. It would, for somebody who is just holding land and intends to do nothing with it, and we do have some landowners in Ledyard Center who are just holding it, their taxes would go up dramatically, which would force it, which would provide an incentive for them to sell a property to someone who had developed it. We are, the town has adopted a pro-development policy, and this would be consistent with, with that policy. The, so, and there's other, there's other ways to do it, too. But, but the most important thing is that a new police station going in the proposed location is a good idea, but I don't think it's good enough for the public unless it is part, marketed as part of a larger improvement project for Ledyard Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treister. Are there any other residents or property owners like to speak before the council? Hearing none, at this time, General Manager Michael Carroll, if you would like to come to the podium and give us your report.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting me tonight. My name is Michael Carroll. I'm the new General Manager of Southeast Area Transit District, and the mayor asked me to come to just provide a quick update on what's happening at SEET. So I will do my level of best, recognize that I've been there a walk in seven weeks now, and I am from Virginia, some folks say I have a bit of an accent by way of Ohio. So forgive me if I might not be able to answer all the questions that you may have. Obviously, my being here is one of the signs of the first change at SEET. I think recently the board requested assistance from the state to address a long-term outstanding debt over the fuel spill that we had a number of years ago. The state did step forward and provide the funds to clear up that outstanding debt, so that is now behind us, which is a good thing. And as part of that arrangement, the state also indicated that he desired that they would take a more active role in the operations and management of Southeast Area Transit District. And part of that, I believe, is my being here, I think both the state and First Transit, who I actually work for, who has the management contract, the Southeast Area Transit District, felt it was a good time, perhaps, for a change in leadership at SEET. So they asked me to come and replace this phone, which I did as of March 5th this year. So that's really kind of why I'm here. Now, there are a lot of things, I know that, I think folks are concerned about at SEET, service, et cetera, going forward. I think it's an exciting time to be involved in this process of change. I'm not sure that we know exactly what SEET will look like in another year or two, but I think it will be a different entity. One of the first things I'm trying to do is just get a handle on, on the staff and functions and how we sort of do business so that I understand and can weigh the strengths and weaknesses of the current organization. I would like to build upon those, those strengths, improve obviously the weaknesses. There is talk about stepping back and taking a look at the service that we provide, a comprehensive analysis of that service and the lingo of transit, a comprehensive operational analysis or transit development plan, which I would welcome. Obviously, it would entail a lot of involvement from all the member towns, public involvement, the CAG as well, to take a look at our current level of service, what works, what doesn't work, take a look at our net service needs and how we might best address those. I'm of the belief that when my staff comes to me and says, "Well, you've always done it this way," I'm going to throw it right back at them and say, "Well, why have we always done it this way?" Because there, perhaps there are good and valid reasons, but let's, we start thinking about doing things differently. So I think there will be changes going forward. Unfortunately, I can't give you specifics as to what those changes will be, but I look forward to working with all the member towns, with the board of directors, and obviously with the Connecticut Department of Transportation as well. And again, I am not an employee of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. I work for First Transit and you do have a management contract. And personally, I've been involved in transit for 30 years of my life. I started out as a bus operator while I wanted graduate school. I often say I inhale diesel exhaust and that's all she goes, so. I've done transit at the ground level and I've worked my way up. It's been a lot of fun and, and as I said, I look forward to the challenges here, too. I'll do my level of best and try to answer any questions that I have.
Yes, I just have a question. I just want to say, welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad that you're here and glad that you came to see us and we look forward to other updates. Thank you.
Any other councils have questions?
So what, so what do, I do have a question. What do you think your first challenge is?
Well, first, the most immediate challenge I have is upcoming labor negotiations. We have a labor contract that is expired June 30th of this year, and we start contract talks within a couple of weeks, and I'm sure they will be challenging going forward. And as you probably know, we had some interesting outcome in the last labor talks, so I've got a First Transit attorney assisting me. I've been through many labor talks before in my career, so. Trying to, I'm working on trying to build a good relationship with the union. As I, as I tell the union president, you know, I can at least listen to what you have to say. He may not like the answer if you ask him a question, and we can certainly agree pleasantly to disagree sometimes, but ultimately, we do have to work together. But I also have to be mindful that I've got a budget to achieve, and I'm very aware of the challenges that all of us face in the union budgets.
Well, thank you and good luck on your first challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any comments of town councillors?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to address Mr. Treister's comment that the police station is discretionary. If any of you have gone down and seen the condition that the police station is in, I call it anything but necessary. I mean, the police station needs at least a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs. We know it needs a $78,000 new system for heating and cooling, which we have been mandated fixing for the last three years. It's a 100-year-old building built as a barn, and we're fortunate that we've been able to be in it as long as we have, but we are going to have to build something or do something for the police. You can argue that the place we chose is not the place to do it. You can argue it's not the building, but it's not discretionary. You absolutely have to do something. The, the conditions down there are, I'll be nice, they're not, they're not nice.
Well, Council Wodecki, you, you opened up exactly what I was going to say, so normally I wait till the end, but you gave me the opportunity. The police will be hosting an open house on Thursday, May 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and Saturday, May 5th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And the open house will allow residents to inspect the current police facility, so I think we should encourage people that have never seen the police station to go take a look. And are there any other councillors that have comments? Councilor Allen?
I'd just like to make one quick comment, and it's more of a thank you to the handful of residents that stepped forward to fill a number of volunteer commission and committee seats recently.
Good point. Any other comments from town councillors?
And also, because Mr. Treister, also, the Ledger Town Center Committee has been working to do the improvements to the center corridor here, removing the fence in front of the school, like in front of the, the town green area and some things like that. On a side note, no, I'll reserve.
Any other, any other comments? Yes. Uh-oh.
Councilor Eichler?
I simply want to second Counselor Wodecki's comments, as well as Chairman Davis. Go to the open house. When they close the doors, you'll still feel like you're in an open house. That place is, that place is pathetic. I couldn't, I couldn't use any, any, that place is literally pathetic. Mr. Treister, if you get a chance, please go down there. This, this building is anything but discretionary.
Mr. Treister, Mr. Treister.
Let me finish.
You can continue now, Mr. Eichler.
I believe that a bright shiny new police station in the center of town will be a huge addition to what, you know, the development that we've had in the recent years, such as the dime bank and the ledger store, the work that's been done by the Town Center Committee with the sidewalk and the, the new things that have been going on, the stone wall, and I think it's going to make a beautiful addition to the town center. And again, I'd encourage everyone to get down to that police station, and you will, you will immediately see that this is just not a discretionary issue at this point. It is an absolute mandated necessity.
Any other councillors have comments?
Officer Soms?
I just wanted to remind our residents of what the police in Boston went through last week, and I think a police station is long overdue for nothing more than to indicate to our police here in Ledyard that we value their service. Thank you.
Any other councillors have comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve minutes.
I'm moved. Seconded.
Motion's made. Seconded, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichler?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Murrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Soms, I might want to add that units are approved as filed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
We all nodded.
Yeah, he had, he had the answer.
Yeah.
He wanted his vote in.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to move down to council liaison reports. Sorry, communications. You all have communications, referrals, subcommittee reports, admin, any report?
The administration committee has not met since our last meeting. Nothing to report.
Anybody here from community services have anything to report?
No, we didn't.
Councilor France, finance?
Finance committee met last Wednesday. Other than the agenda items, other, we did discuss a couple items of old business and plan to address those at our next meeting next Wednesday. First is the tax payment proposal for the Ecclesiastical Society, building housing on Churchill Road. The second is the proposed amendments to ordinance 114, which deals with appropriate refurbishment and service. We did send a letter to LVs, notify them of the intention to bring that issue back on the table next Wednesday and anticipate their participation in that process. In addition, on Monday, we held a public hearing on the budget, was, we had about six or eight questions regarding the budget, as well as the pending proposals for construction, which we'll answer. I still have outstanding action to give back to Mr. Jones on his question regarding revenue.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? Councilor Soms, information technology?
IT has not met since last town council meeting, but we will have an agenda item to add, an amendment to the Senate's agenda.
Okay, Landry's Planning, Councilor Dombrowski?
Landry's has not met since our last meeting, go ahead.
And our Board of Education liaison, Councilor Allen?
Board of Education also has not met. They've actually flip-flopped their schedule a little bit, so they're meeting tonight, and there are three or four other meetings throughout the year where they coincide with our council meetings. Just a brief report among the, the school safety committee, and we've been meeting regularly, and we're, we are putting together recommendations to provide a better, more secure school system, and that'll be forthcoming.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Allen? WPCA, Councilor France?
WPCA held its regular meeting last night, 7:00 p.m., Tuesday, April 23rd, here. We heard a presentation from Mike McGuire, who has, you'll recall, has been working for a number of years, sewer study townwide, but they're looking at is areas that have failed or, meaning areas with high concentrations of sewer septic systems that have failed, as well as looking at our existing sewer plant. And they've been looking for, at a future plan for what, how to address sewage. The areas they looked at are Ledyard Center, Algen Heights, Avery Hill, Gales Ferry, and Christie Hill. Options for, and this is all future plans, this is a long-term plan, it's been going on for 30 years, I might add. The options are onsite community disposal systems, upgrading the existing Highlands plant, and pumping sewage to Groton, Norwich, or Mashentucket, or several places. None of these options are simple, all are very expensive, and as I mentioned, it's, it's been a long-term project, but they're coming close to presenting their report. Also, the WPCA approved an extension of Groton Utilities' operating agreement through to July 31st, while they continue to prepare revenue expense data in order to negotiate a long-term contract. They've also started drafting a cross-connection inspection policy because Ledyard residents, apparently this has not been administered well in the past, and some Ledyard residents are quite surprised to learn that there is a state regulation about inspecting cross-connections. So if you have a well and you have town water, you can't connect those two, and it has to be by, by part of public health standards, it has to be inspected regularly. Finally, good news, the project cost on the Avery Hill, not, this part isn't good, the project cost on the Avery Hill pump station, which was estimated at $350,000, came in closer to $900,000. I had gotten wind of this last week, and then the mayor reported on it, so now I want to tell you what, what Groton Utilities and the WPCA has done. The reason for the high bid is there's a big project going on in East Line, and that attracted all the attention of the contractors. So there was only one company submitting a bid, Groton Utilities met with their engineer, they reduced the design and thus the cost, they're going to put it back out to bid and hopefully get some better estimates. The project engineer says he will have everything ready by May 6th to send to the state, and if all goes well, it could be online by September at the earliest, but we don't have history of moving that quickly, so we'll stay on.
We might, we could start that, Mr.?
Yeah, we could change that. I think I'll leave the good news to the mayor about the rest of that project, but I also want to mention that we received a correction to a report I made last week about the, the escrow funds for the Holmberg tank. Apparently, they are handled separately. The money is in an account that's just not handled by the town. That's why we don't have the money, so there's been a good news there.
That's very wise.
Very wise, yeah.
Any questions?
Do you have enough to add? I can't get by September. I'm still.
There's other good news, right?
I, I sure hope certain people's TVs aren't working. Yeah.
Okay, well, it appears that the mayor doesn't know what the other good news is, or do you?
No, he's still listening to the pump station.
I'm still hearing September ringing up here. Can you whisper just now?
Water line?
The water line has water in it, the pressure's on, the pressure testing, they're going to do a little more testing, chlorine residuals, and residents in Algen Heights should start contacting contractors if they plan to connect, because we're ready to go. It's in Algen, or Avery Hill, unfortunately, due to the pump station is not that, so we're going to have to work a little longer.
He's still hearing September.
Any questions for Councilor Soms? Okay, report of the mayor.
Okay, thank you. As you, as I informed you, our town clerk, Mike Curley, submitted his resignation, accepted with regret. We have given the position to Patricia Riley, who will assume the position on June 3rd. Mr. Curley has done an incredible job in the time he's been here, both in personnel and power and process improvements. One of the biggest achievements working with other departments is the successful incorporation of a floater position, which is helping many departments and giving us flexibility with trained personnel. Ms. Riley comes to us with extensive experience, she's currently the assistant clerk in Preston, so we look forward to her enthusiasm coming along. And what I'd like to say, if I had to say the one contribution besides, you know, the processes and things like that, and the, the many, many, I'd say probably getting hundreds of boxes of documents that have been removed from the town and shredded and organized, but the one thing is really the public interface in the clerk's office and the, the comments that I hear from people about that. The, on the way of personnel, also, we will be hiring a full-time zoning and wetlands enforcement officer, Mr. Joe Larkin, will be joining the staff full-time on May 1st. He's currently part-time here. He brings 30-plus years of experience in zoning in wetlands, most recently in Stonington, and we've already seen some enforcement activity, and, you know, in a very subtle but effective way, we've had some successes there. You have to understand, and, you know, I'll just address Mr. Treister's comment, not about the police station, I think you folks have done a good job there, but, you know, if you, if every one of you took me around to your favorite zoning violation in town, you'd be hard-pressed to find any that are less than 5, 10, 15, or 20 years old. And I would, I would say the same thing about here in Ledyard Center. It's interesting when we interview for previous zoning position, and we ask each one of them, "Did you notice anything when you came into town?" Every one of them said, "Yes, signs, I see signs everywhere." Trust me, those signs pre-existed many of us, certainly me and many of you. You know, it's something that needs to be worked on, and, and it's something that, again, I think Mr. Larkin can do very effectively. He already has, you know, I call it the list, he's got the list of things that he's going to look at, and I think he has a very effective and knowledgeable way to do that. Once again, I want to talk about dispatch, and I want to do a couple of them. First of all, again, everybody's clear, I want to review the activities and the process that we used to take us to where we are this week, and this is a very important week in this process. I went back through my records, and, you know, there, there have been some, there's been some comments, statements in Duendo that somehow the mayor is not working with our own dispatchers, that cannot be further from the truth. We met as a group on January 25th, we met again on February 1st with dispatch personnel. We requested information on dispatch staffing. And I want to read you an email dated March 7th. During the union's meeting with the mayor, he tasked us to look at different shift scenarios. We will need information regarding call volumes for mids, days, eves. The union will need information on the number of emergency administrative phone calls and the number of dispatch calls for mids, days, eves. We would also like the number of motor vehicle stops. Can you please compile this information for the time frame of September to February? Thank you in advance for this information. And that's signed by three dispatchers, two of whom are union officials. The subcommittee who's working on this has held off action as long as they can. I told, in that meeting, I told them that I would like the information by the end of March, and that we were willing to stop the clock and wait for that information. When it was clear that, that we were not going to get the information, we sent requests for prices to Groton and Montville. And I will say that I received this week credible and very, very attractive propositions and proposals from both of those organizations. That being said, my office is open, and I would beg your light very much, you know, I wanted things by the end of this week, by the end of this month, and I would certainly hope that I will receive additional information. My staff met with the new commander of Troop B, Lieutenant Michael Thomas, I've met him before. We had an excellent exchange of information on operations and the future of our police department. The, the state police are very aware of the town of Ledyard, towns of Ledyard, Montville, and East Line, and where they're headed in the future. And the state police, I have to say, are being very supportive of us. They recognize that they provide service, they recognize... They recognize that there's equality in what they do, but they recognize reality also in the towns like Ledger, you know, are at a point where we need to be looking at moving on. And so they're being extremely helpful with that. I think we have an excellent relationship with them. We talked again about some of the operational coordination that's done. We talked about mutual aid, which we know has been a bit of an issue, and I think we cleared up some things there also. So again, it was very helpful. That being said, I did have some discussions today, and, you know, there are things going on with the state police in terms of consolidation, especially in terms of dispatch, and in terms of some of the things that are happening in their shop that are going to make for some interesting challenges to the municipality. Seat, I appreciate the report you sent from the manager there. What's happening is, as you know, right now, the seat board consists of representatives, either one or two, from the member towns of which Ledger is one. What's happening is they feel that we have to change that paradigm, and the COG is working with the state representatives, and the state DOT are actually attending the COG meetings, attending... They attended one of the seat meetings. They're very much involved, and they're looking... One of the suggestions that was made, that's being investigated, is why not have all 20 towns, whether they're members or not, be a member of the seat board? The reason being, if you want to expand service, you obviously have to expand it beyond the member towns. And now, you know, there's some legalities to that, because I think legally, right now, you can only be a member of the board if you happen to be a member. So it's something that's being looked at, and it's something that needs to be established. I'm working on that. Finally, the building department permit kiosk is up and running. Contractors have been tickling the ivories and reviewing their permits. I've heard, I've had no one come to my office and complain or say they weren't doing it. It's working well with staff and customers, and being very receptive. We find a few little... You know, there's always some new permits that come along, but again, I think it's a big step forward. It's something we've talked about for a long time, and I'm very happy that we've gotten that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Wow. I would just like to make a comment to follow up what you said about some of our favorite zoning violations or blight issues. I noticed that my favorite blight issue is being cleaned up, and I'm stunned, because it's been that way for at least 10 years. So somebody's doing good work, so thank you. Okay. At this time, would anybody like to remove item number one from the table?
Actually, don't want to do that, may agenda.
Under new business, we're still on to old business.
No.
No? Okay. Moving on to new business, would anybody like to amend the agenda at this time?
I'd like to move to amend the agenda to add a motion to authorize the town to apply for a C task grant to the Cable Television Advisory Council of Southeastern Connecticut in the amount of up to $7,000 to purchase equipment to enhance the community's public programming activities.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sonson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, and that will be item number six. Okay. Let's see, where am I? Finances, item number one.
Make a motion to approve five tax refunds totaling $12,258.98 to exceed $1,200 on course of tax collector mark procedures.
Second. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sonson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number two.
Make a motion to adopt a fiscal year 2013-2014 budget in the amount of $50,136,531 comprised of the general government budget for $24,42,567, and a board of education budget of $29,693,964.
Second. Any discussion?
To summarize, there was a public hearing held on Monday. This is the motion to adopt, and it will be a town meeting on the 20th, which will adjourn to referendum, and we will vote on the budget.
Any questions? I would just... Yes, Counselor.
I just want to say, considering the driving factors for the budget this year, I think this is an excellent budget, and so I would congratulate both the mayor and the Board of Ed on doing a great job on holding the line on this.
I agree, and also, the process itself was very smooth.
Yes.
Which helps a lot.
It really was. Anything else? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sonson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Okay. Item number three, don't want to fight over who wants to make the motion, but I'm going to let Counselor Wodecki make this motion.
Thank you. I move to rescind a resolution appropriating $45 million for the design and construction of additions and renovations to the Ledger Middle School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance that appropriation as adopted by the town council at its April 10, 2013 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
The discussion's going to be, I think I sit here and say for all of us, a collective sigh of relief. I mean, the last meeting, we spent over an hour discussing this project before we approved it, and I think we all had a lot of tension, and it was a really hard thing to approve, because we believed the price was too high. The state agreed with that. But I sit here saying, I'm waiting for this school to come back with some kind of a project that is more affordable and that we can approve, because we need to fix the middle school. We need to fix it for educational and security reasons. And I think the reason that we all voted to pass this along was that very reason, even though the price really bothered us, but I now all sleep better.
Any other comments? Counselor Frank?
I attended the last, this is building committee meeting on Monday night before the public hearing. This subject was discussed briefly there. The one thing Haswell says, the building committee is very aware of their role in this, in leading the effort and working with the ideas that will come out of the Board of Ed. One comment that I will make is, in the evolution of the project, when it was initially proposed, the structure of the building was going to remain intact, and they were going to put non-structural walls, the sound isolation dampening doors, to provide a good learning environment. What happened is an extremely dramatic increase in the scope of the project to where they invaded the integrity of the building, which drove cost significantly. I would encourage the building committee, as well as the Board of Ed, helping them with their membership, to go back to the simpler design, which truly would be renovated as new, leave the exterior integrity of the building intact, and then put the non-structural walls in, which are much cheaper than having to go back and redo the structure of the building. That would be my encouragement to them, as they go back and relook at this project. Thank you.
Any other comments from town councils? I did have opportunity... Oh, go ahead.
I think I want to take this opportunity then, once more, to make my comments about Ledger Center, and also ask the municipal building committee to consider the larger picture, which is the good of the town of Ledger, as well as its businesses and education, and consider alternate locations, or at least consider whether we really need to close Ledger Center School, or find other options to replace it. Thank you.
I did have the opportunity today to speak, or this week, to speak to two members of the building committee, and I think they're probably as relieved as we are. I got the sense that they felt the same. They had to approve it, and they don't feel they had the opportunity to review it as well as they should. And so I think they had the same sense that we did, and they are ready to move forward, work with the Board of Education, and come up with a project. But they both said they do need to have some time to review, and I would encourage Counselor Saons to go to their next meeting. I believe it's Monday, the...
It's May 6th.
May 6th.
This meeting, that's Monday.
This Monday coming up?
I'm going to be. I don't know who I'm meeting.
April 29th.
April 29th.
Who was meeting?
I don't know. I was invited to the...
The facilities committee or the Board of Education, where the architect of the town, that was already planned, it was a planned regular meeting of the facilities committee.
Thank you. Now I know where I'm going.
We're going to the same place, because they...
I was actually invited.
Now, I'm hoping, I will try to remain calm, that they have invited the municipal building committee to that meeting.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes. That invitation was extended at the special meeting last week.
Thank you.
And Rox has to...
Yes.
Would you like to note for the record that this is being rescinded at the request of Dr. Mear?
That would be quite polite. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sonson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sonson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number four. Counselor France, would you...
Make a motion to amend the council resolutions approving a bond resolution and calling town beating of our freedom, as adopted by the town council at its April 10, 2013 meeting, as contained in the amended draft dated April 13, 2013.
Second. And this would be just to change things because of the...
Right. Essentially, remove the middle school renovation project and maintains the police station project under one resolution.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sonson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number five. Anybody have anything they would like to discuss for the good of the group? Item number six, Counselor Saons.
I move to authorize the town to apply for a C task grant to Cable Television Advisory Council of Southeastern Connecticut, the amount of up to $7,000 to purchase equipment to enhance the community's public programming activities. Second. Thank you. The Cable Television Advisory Council of Southern Connecticut is offering a grant program which we've used in the past to enable its member towns to apply for one-time grants to support its local public education government capabilities. The $7,000 grant can be used for hardware and software, but not for services, and it does not require a town match. The reason I'm looking to add this item to tonight's agenda is because the grant application is due to C task by May 9th, and we won't be meeting in time to do that. The information technology committee has been working with TRD Media's Mr. Bruce Edwards to determine the equipment needed, for both the general government and the Board of Education. Cost estimates would be included as part of the grant. So this is the grant that we've used to purchase things like, in this room, the large-screen